Thank you, Mayor, Commission, members of the community that have tuned in this evening to listen to this. So every year as we go through our CMIP projects, it's really an extended process that continues out through many months of the year. In the fall months, we appear before the commission and standing committee levels and go through and talk to them about what projects are coming up for the coming year that we've built into our budget. And then we start to structure what we're looking at for our next five years and work those through priority. And then as we move into the new year, we start trying to pair up those high priority projects with our current budget. And then, of course, as we go through the coming months after this, we will continue to strategize about what all we can fund and try to get done. Tonight, we wanted to talk about what those projects are that are in the five-year plan. And of course, we think about the many projects that we have and the need we have for the next 20 years. But I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Fisher, Director of Public Works, and his team to present this item this evening. Jeff?
Thank you, Doug. Good evening. Since Doug has given the intro and explained the process, I'll just start by saying, over the last couple of years, staff has been working closely with the County Administrator's Office and Commission to evaluate and understand the needs around infrastructure and assets and begin to determine how we go about developing strategies and solutions. I don't have good news. We have a daunting problem before us, but it is a problem we can solve with a sustained commitment over many years. The problem didn't occur overnight, and it won't be solved overnight. Last three years has been a period of data collection and analysis. Data regarding the condition of streets, bridges, stormwater system and facilities. And the data and condition assessments when projected out over the next decade tell us that we will face serious conditions. We're experiencing this already with poor street conditions, failing bridges like Central Avenue that's recently shut down, failing storm boxes like on 91st Street, and buildings that require big dollars to maintain year after year like City Hall and Court Systems Facilities. It should not be news. The cities across the country are struggling to meet these challenges, just like KCK. It may be news to some in KCK, though, that a crisis is looming, and we are at a crossroads. And the questions before us are, what kind of community do we want to be going forward? What kind of community do we want to hand down to the next generation? How do we want to support our business community? The path we're on currently will not be good for either. This will require bold thinking and bold actions, in my opinion. Before we get into the presentation, I'd like to introduce Robby Anderson, the UG's Asset Manager, and Angel Obert, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. They will play a part in this presentation. Next slide, please. The projects that will take place in '21 and '22 were included in the CMIP, in most cases, three-plus years ago, and all were determined to be important to improve quality of life in some way or another. Next slide, please. There are very large investments that span multiple years, like Walcott and Call Point Projects. Those are treatment plants that are funded by wastewater rates. It's relatively small, vital projects like Seventh and Central that's funded by the General Fund Taxes. Next slide, please. There are dollars allocated each year to maintain and improve public buildings and assets, and dollars spent to improve public health and in neighborhoods each year. Next slide, please. Improving quality of life doesn't have to be a guessing game. The UG has improved greatly in its efforts recently to utilize data the target needs. I'll now hand it over to Rob to describe how we're using data and systematic approach to make smart investments.
So, want to first start by saying thank you for your support of the asset condition collection process and all the different versions of that for different asset classes. So, we've collected information around our streets, our bridges, our buildings, and several other asset classes. And we use that information to drive how we prioritize the needs. A year ago, we reached out to you for modifications to the CMIP capital maintenance policy, and we gathered information that we thought was able to be produced into a data-driven model that was a way to get and capture your priorities for the community. So that weighted criteria is what drives this system. On the right, you can see extended upwards what that looks like, what that landscape that you gave to us looks like. Extending downwards is the cost of infrastructure on each of those blocks. By using that information to drive the process, we can produce the best quality-of-life outcomes for our community. And here is the current list of projects and their ranking in relation to your criteria that you outlined for us. This list might look longer than it did the last time. The reason for that is that we've added some annual maintenance line items from the budget just to illustrate how impactful the maintenance activities that Public Works does are for the community. So using your weighted criteria matrix, we have shown that our regular maintenance operations are impactful. But I wanted us to also think more broadly and ask ourselves, what if every block, what if every street in our community was considered an unfunded project? Now I'm going to pass it back to Jeff to cover our current and future strategies that Public Works employs.
Thank you, Robby. Understanding that the community has high expectations, the UG has been working diligently to identify strategies with a continuous improvement mindset that will result in streamlined processes, more efficient services, economic opportunities, and cost savings. Good work has been done, and there is a lot ahead of us. Next slide, please. Some examples of that include reducing assets, modifying assets to create opportunities and long-term maintenance, using new techniques to stretch the dollars farther, and maximizing return on investments. Next slide. Much of the discussion we've had recently around infrastructure and assets has been set in philosophy of asset management. One of the most important initiatives, in my opinion, for the UG and certainly Public Works. Asset management is simply put, understanding needs and conditions very accurately so that the UG can make smartest decisions possible. The building's inventory is much like streets and bridges and stormwater. It's a large portfolio, and many buildings require a lot of attention and investment. The most important first step has been completed, condition assessment of much of the inventory. The next step is to develop a plan to reduce that portfolio and hence the burden on the financial health of the UG long-term. It appears to me, much like the building's issue, that the Parks and Rec system presents similar issues, and therefore seems to warrant same consideration. The idea on both fronts could be that focusing dollars and investments on less reduces burden and would result in great services as opposed to maybe mediocre services. Next slide, please. There has been some discussion already about strategies to consider as we move forward. There are rightsizing opportunities in areas of buildings and fleet, and steps are already being taken in the area of fleet. Increasing oversight in an area of development and redevelopment is critical to controlling long-term costs of infrastructure. And again, I must recommend that the UG take a step in the right direction on stormwater rates in this budget cycle this year. The stormwater fund is becoming insolvent and capable of funding the needs. There are a lot of emergencies, road closures and delays, and it will inevitably, if not corrected, result in the use of tax dollars. Next slide, please. I have some visuals here to show you, and I'll first say candidly, this may be one of the more difficult presentations I have made in my career for one reason. I find it hard to tell you that we are nearing a real crisis. It feels dramatic, and I know there's already enough of that in our world. So I don't want folks to tune out. The problems are serious. They're real. The visuals I'm about to show are based on current conditions, the age and material type, and projections based on current spending levels and standard deterioration curves. This is street preservation, for example. We've talked about this program for off and on for quite a while. You see a lot of yellow at zero to 100. The average pavement condition in KCK is a 53. Three years ago, when we collected the data, it was about a 56. So it's declining. And it will continue to decline at current spending levels. Next slide, please. Now you see seven years of projections. You see a lot of red, and that means that 60 to 65% of the system will be below a score of 40, poor and failed. Next slide, please. The stormwater system is very similar. Its current conditions, you see a lot of fair to poor and some red. And we project that out 10 years. And due to the material types in the system, which are a lot of concrete and pipe, if not maintained appropriately, and they aren't right now because of funding levels, even areas like the Legends, you start to see go red because 10 years from now, much of that infrastructure will be 20 to 30 years old. And if not maintained appropriately, they will begin to move into that poor and failed condition. Next slide, please. There are serious infrastructure problems to confront, but a long-term strategy and a systematic approach will be instrumental in reimagining the future and building it. Robby's going to walk us back through the work of the commission and staff over the last 60 days.
So again, I want to thank the commission for their time, meeting with us one-on-one and in teams, covering, you know, a lot of difficult material around what asset classes need to be funded at and what they're currently funded at. So every year you get together and approve a CMIP, and it might look like it's just next year's projects that you're focused on. Or maybe if you're thinking a little further down the road, it's two or three years. But in reality, for society, what matters is a long-term vision. What does that look like when reproduced out over and over again into the future, say, 25 years? So we need to think deeply about these questions. We need to have an accurate assessment of all the conditions so that we can calculate the needs, and then we need to prioritize what kind of direction and which way we want to go in the future and what kind of world we want to leave behind for the next generation. So in order to do that, what we did was take the current budget and break it down into some understandable categories to the layperson. An individual project might have a name that doesn't really make sense to the public, but we've collected that information into categories here, and that's what we did in our engagement with the commission. So we have bridges, street maintenance, public buildings, a subset of those public buildings being parks, buildings, capital projects, and traffic engineering. So we'll walk through the needs first. The needs here are outlined from bridge inspections. So based on bridge inspections for legal bridges and short-span bridges, we estimate a need of around $14 million yearly. That does not include long bridges like the ones crossing the river. So the recently closed Central Avenue Bridge is not included in this assessment or annual needs here. Our street maintenance, we've been pushing this repeatedly. We need around $20 million annually in pavement preservation to adequately improve the PCI score of our roads, as Jeff spoke to earlier. Public buildings information, we got a really high-quality Amoresco walkdown of our buildings that gave us a good calculation to say, we need around $12 million annually for our UG public buildings. And again, that subset of parks, buildings being around 1 million annually of needs. Capital projects here includes, in this estimate here, includes a streetlight modernization project spread out over multiple years. So by funding this capital projects, what would other communities might consider traditional capital improvements as opposed to maintenance, you have things also like 11 Worth Road or a true reconstruction of a road. Traffic engineering might be our least pinned-down asset condition class. But based on our rough estimates, we need around 2 million annually for traffic improvements. Then we get to the half. So currently, for bridges, we fund that at around 700K a year. Clearly, that comes up very short of the needs. We have about 10 million annually for the street maintenance. We have about 7.5 million for public buildings, which speaks to the need for possible examination of contracting. We have parks, buildings as a subset, and they have about 120K annually. And for capital projects, which typically go to the match projects like 11 Worth Road, we have around 2.3 million for those types of projects. Traffic engineering, we spend around 1.3 million annually, but that also includes some other technology improvements to our fiber optic network. And now I'm going to pass it over to Angel Obert to cover some parks, capital, and maintenance items.
Thank you, Robby, and good evening, Commissioners. So like Robby said, these are the four funding buckets that we have identified for Parks and Recreation. So we have our capital projects, our park maintenance, our recreation and programming, and also our trails. So what you'll see here, these figures are estimates and data that we gathered from the recent master plan we did in 2017, starting with capital projects. So annually, we have about $250,000 to attack those capital projects that we have in our department, when really we need roughly 3 million. A good example of this, and we get asked often about the Beatrice Lee Community Center. So for example, to bring that center up to code, it would be about 2.2 million. Our park maintenance funding bucket, we have 2.5 million yearly. 5 million would be more comfortable for us to maintain everything that we do here in parks. And this is anything, including our buildings, shelters, playgrounds, beautification. We have roughly 200 playground systems within our parks, and the average age of those systems is anywhere from 12 to 15 years. Recreation and programming, we have 1.5 million, and more programs require more staff. So that's a large deficit that we see there to be able to bring more programming to our community and quality services and programs for youth. And then also our trails funding bucket, which is, we recently took this over from Public Works budget, and it's the 100,000 every year. This is exciting for us because it is a big need for our community. They came out and ranked this as one of the top five features they'd like to see more of in parks. And we are moving forward with our first project here, Clam Park, but with only $100,000 a year. This will be a multi-phase project, so five phases being completed in 2025. And a nice statistic from the master plan to reference our budget and our operations is, we maintain over twice as much parkland per 1,000 residents than other municipalities similar population to us, the 100,000 to 200,000. And that data is also tracked by the National Recreation and Park Association performance metrics.
Thank you, Angel. So to bring it back, big picture to the exercise that we reached out to the commission on. We wanted to gather, based on this needs data and the needs gap information, we wanted to not only get information around what you might like to see those funded at, we wanted also to gather where you might place emphasis within each of those individual asset classes. So if you have roads and parks, how would you split that up if you were having to decide how you would do that? We also, in that tool, we created some projections for 25 years of what this ongoing CMIP funding gap deficit for maintaining infrastructure would look like. So projecting out the current rate of spending for each of these funding buckets, 25 years from now, you can see how much we would have spent on each of those categories. But you also see here the current needs gap. So 25 years from now, we're looking at around half a billion dollars in deferred maintenance debt for both streets and bridges. And when you add that up with the other funding buckets here, you're looking at around 1.5 billion dollars of deferred maintenance debt that the next generation will have to figure out how to pay for. When we reached out to you, we got information around how you might increase that in a theoretical environment, not a real-world budget, just as an exercise here. And to walk you through this little bar graph here, if you can see color, the dark green represents what we currently fund each of these categories at. The light green represents the aggregate change or the average change that was accumulated in our interactions with you on the tool. But the remaining gray box on top represents the total needs for each of those funding buckets. So even after our engagement process, we came up short in the majority of these categories. I think it's interesting to note bridges here, which represents obviously maybe a knee-jerk reaction to some fresh data from the commission around the condition and the annual funding needs for our bridges. Well, what does that look like if we projected out 25 years into the future? So clearly, we've increased the total amount of money spent 25 years from now in this theoretical modified budget. But we still come up short 25 years on the modified needs gap. And to bring this home to an individual level, right now, at the current rate, every resident would have around $260 of deferred maintenance debt annually now, today. And 25 years from now, our future residents would have $10,000 in deferred maintenance debt per person. So what do we want to be? How do we want to look to both goods, services, and our community? And what kind of life and quality of life do we want to provide for society? To me, public spaces are the seam that pulls us all together and makes society function. So I'm going to pass it back to Jeff to round out this discussion and start a discussion with you here today.
Thank you, Robby and Angel. In conclusion, staff, please. The two most important immediate actions to leave here with is, one, adopt a stormwater rate that is a step in the right direction in this budget cycle this year. And staff and our consultant have been working on alternative plan I mentioned on threes. Would be ready to engage in the next few weeks. And then together, develop, probably more importantly, develop written long-term strategies. Strategies, of course, are not going to solve the problems. Establishing priority, action plans that are routinely reviewed, updated, acted upon over a long period of time are going to be necessary. Again, I believe we will need to be bold to change the trajectory this community is currently on. Whatever the strategies may look like, I would suggest that they will need to result in substantial shifts in capital investments to manage the crisis and build the future. Staff, prepared to be a part of those discussions and strategies. We thank you.
So with this, Mayor, I think we set out where we are. Not a pretty picture when it comes out to looking at. It's a major investment area. As you can see, the numbers of the halves. We do spend a lot of money in this area every year, though we are an older community with aging infrastructure, which causes us to have a continual need that continues to grow each year. And I think that's what staff's really trying to underline to the governing body as we think about our priorities in the future. There are some things we look at that I think were mentioned. I mean, that in some areas, maybe some of our public buildings and things we saw with changes with virtual environments that we don't need as much of, and there may be some changes we can go to. But there is a big issue out here if we look at overall infrastructure. And I think that's a strategy we want to discuss this evening with the commission.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Rob. Thanks to everyone who had a hand in this, to the commission for your input during the on-threes. And clearly, this can, when I first saw this, and as we've seen over the past several years, this can feel overwhelming. I describe it as, you know, trying to climb Mount Everest with a day pack instead of a backpack. And the, you know, I think moving forward, what we really need to do is suggested, and I hear this from the commission so often. You know, it's hard for us to take constituent calls who have a complaint about, you know, road deterioration or, you know, simple things like curbs out of repair, stormwater running through a yard and flooding someone's basement. I can tell that story myself. I've seen streets, roads that are on ditches that clearly we cannot and are not maintaining them sufficiently. And so we end up having washouts that then require even require emergency repair, which are far more expensive than just maintenance. And so the totality of it, I think, can really be overwhelming to us because we have to explain to constituents why things are not getting done. And that's, we don't want to have to tell constituents why things are not getting done. We want to tell them, oh, thank you for bringing that to our attention, for reporting that. We will push that on, and they will get that fixed. And too often, we're just, most often, we're not able to do that. I think Jeff Fisher had told me that they have a stormwater review committee so that when there is an issue reported on stormwater and there's some damage done or some deterioration, that then they take it to the committee, and the committee looks at it, and 70% of the time, they have to say, no, we don't have the resources to do anything about it. That's the message none of us want to tell our constituents. It's not the message that we want Kansas City, Kansas, to have to tell. What we want to be able to say is that we understand the full range, the entire panoply of infrastructure needs, of capital improvements, of building maintenance and streets and stormwater. We understand those. We understand where we are, what their current state is, and we know where we want to be. And ultimately, we want to create a community that when people visit us or we drive people around, we are proud to point out, to say, this is a well-maintained city that invites you to be here, to live here, to establish a business here, and that we are so committed to our city that we are investing in these capital needs. So you should invest your own capital, whether it's purchasing a home, whether it's establishing a business. That's the dynamic for growth, for moving us into the future. But when I listen to this, the trajectory I see that we are on is on decline, that we're not even able to fund up adequate maintenance to prevent things from getting worse. And in fact, at our current levels, they are necessarily going to deteriorate even further, and it's going to create even more costs for future generations. And so I think sometimes, if my own children were to watch this presentation, and they begin to make decisions about where they want to build, where they want to settle, why would they if they thought we were not going to take this into consideration and really come up with a long-term vision, a long-term plan? And so the other thing I will say is, we've... I the other thing I will say is we've we, again, we had a two-year process of of looking at stormwater. And then we look at our street conditions. And then we look at really what we need to do for our streetlights. And then we look at you know, our parks department, our buildings. And we will take those buckets and we look at them in isolation and we might increase funding for one bucket, thinking we're doing some good. But that means then there's not money for the other buckets. You know, it's, it's if we take money from streets, okay, and to put it to parts, good. But we're taking money from streets and it's getting worse. Or if we take, put money into, we've already seen it on our on a Boeing of lots for blight remediation. We've had to pull people from parks and wreck to go and cut the lots for the the blight remediation, which is a good thing. But again, it means our parks are not being cut as often. Where we don't have the resources at this point to do what we need to do. And so part of the the vision is where do we want to be in twenty-five years? Because we're not going to climb Mount Everest in one year, two year, or five year CMIP. We've really got to extend twenty-five years and we have to really come as a commission a commitment to a vision of where we can be in twenty-five years. And commit to developing a strategy that will last beyond my term, beyond any of our terms, that it becomes a commitment of our electorate, our communities, to say, this is who we can become in twenty-five years if we follow the strategy. And we know it's going to require tremendous discipline. That is, discipline means saying, these are the things we must say yes to. And these are the things we must say no to if we're going to attain the vision, the greater place we need to be. And so I I have to say, it's it's a little overwhelming. It can be discouraging only if we say that we're powerless. And we are not powerless. We have to use the power that we have to tell the story to our constituents, to engage them and to really make the commitment to saying this, we can improve the quality of life, in fact, we must improve the quality of life if we want to continue to grow this community. And and that's going to be our responsibility, I think. We have to come up with a process that engages the entire commission in looking at these problems. Describing the vision we want to get to and describing the strategies we're going to get there. And then as a whole, taking that to the to the electorate, telling the story and engaging them and leading them on the way, encouraging them so that we can become the city that our residents and our businesses deserve. So I want to thank again Jeff and Rob and the team for putting this together. I I will not be discouraged by this. I will not be defeated. I'm resolved to working with the commission, working with staff, working with our electorate to really putting together a twenty-five year plan that is going to significantly move us forward and help us climb that mountain. Commissioner Markley.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think the big takeaway for me from this presentation is that we have to take a first step. And we are going to climb Mount Everest with the day pack, but maybe the day pack can get us to the base camp. I don't know. And then we could see from there where we go next. But I think over the years, this problem is so big that we've said, well, we don't have enough budget to solve the problem. And we've kind of backed away from taking those first steps. We got to take a first step, but we got to take a step in the right direction. And then next year, we're going to take another step and the year after that, we're going to take another step. But we've got to stop waiting to have enough money to take those steps because that day is not going to come. I mean, it's just like in your home budget, if you're like waiting for that day when you're going to win the lottery and you're going to get to do that big project, it's not going to come. You better start putting money in your piggy bank because that's the way you're going to get there. So we've got to start taking those small steps, deciding how much money is going to go in our public works piggy bank. And we just got to take it, you know, little by little and know that we're not going to win the lottery. It'd be nice if we did, but we're not going to win the lottery. We've just got to decide how much we're going to commit and and take those first steps and the sooner the better because we've put it off long enough.
Commissioner McCarron.
Thank you, Mayor. To Jeff, to Robbie, to Angel, to everybody who has participated in doing this assessment and bringing us the sobering reality, I thank you. I agree with the mayor, I agree with Commissioner Markley, that we are going to need to simply take the steps to start the process of improving our infrastructure. But this is a question that I started with Robbie the other day, and I'd like to maybe pursue a little bit further, not tonight, but in the weeks to come. So Angel, you said that we maintain about twice the square area of parkland compared to peer cities on a per capita basis?
Yes, Commissioner, according to the NRPA data from two thousand seventeen.
And Jeff, I think you have mentioned in the past that we maintain or we have and need to maintain many more lane miles of roadway than peer cities. Would that be accurate?
Well, the the system is large and we spend about a third per year that peer city for lane.
So one of the questions that I think we need to discuss is, for example, with parks. Why do we maintain double the square area on a per capita basis? What's the advantage to us of doing that? Is the advantage to us compelling enough to spend the additional money? Can we learn some lessons from other cities and shrink maybe our square area and still provide all the amenities that our constituents want and need? So a question we're not going to answer tonight, but I think questions we need to consider. What lessons can we learn from other cities? For example, if we took peer cities of similar geographic size, similar population, similar age of infrastructure. How do we compare in terms of CMIP spending on a per capita basis with them? Do we spend more? Do we spend less? Are there strategies that they are using that can inform our program going forward? I'd love to know how we compare to peer cities in terms of both our assets and their condition and our plan for moving forward with the repair of those. And finally, do I understand, and I see Kathleen's on, do I understand that at the moment at least, we're contemplating that the majority of any increase that we would devote toward improving our assets would come from cash and not from debt?
That's correct, Commissioner. Yes, it would have to come from cash because our debt is already pretty much at at its limit considering our current assessed value. So the the credit rating agencies do a ratio analysis and and given our current debt load compared with their assessed value, we're we're up there. So it wouldn't be advisable to issue more debt than we currently do.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to confirm that because I think that again informs the strategies that we might use going forward. Because it does color how we're going to end up paying for the improvement process. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Yes, and just to tail end on everything that everybody else has said, this is just one more thing that that I do have a question about. And I know we have a lot of building assets, that sort of things. And and it was mentioned earlier that we're not necessarily needing all of that. And there may be some things that we're taking care of that we could sell and therefore not spend money on taking care of them and handle things a little differently. I'm just, you know, going down the road of streamlining. It's like if you can't afford the bass boat right now, even though you love to go fishing, you may have to fish bank once in a while now instead of owning the bass boat. Because if you can't make the payments and take care of, take care of your kids and your home and make it then you can go without the bass boat and just make it to the to the edge of the pond. Just just making a suggestion on that. And and I really think that I appreciate all the hard work everybody's put into this because this has been very painful for all of us to admit as stewards of our community, we really need to just dig in and work on it and now just have to be tough and do it. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and Jeff and to all that took part in this discussion. It's quite a sobering dialogue. I I think I'd like to just piggyback on Commissioner Philbrook with regards to our facilities. It seems to me that might be what one might consider low hanging fruit in this, in the sense that if we could could streamline things as she has suggested, it might help us to save money that could then be transferred to the maintenance and continued building of infrastructure. And so that might be that small first step that Commissioner Markley and Commissioner McCarron might have worked, was alluding to. We just have to be diligent and and as as Jeff has said, we have to be bold. And it could be that that's the first step that we need to take and and something that we can control relatively easily in terms of identifying facilities that we that that are not needed right now, that we might be able to sell or however we need to 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 remedy that. But I would like to, you know, offer that as as a potential starting point. And I'm sure there are some other ideas that will come along as well from my from my colleagues. So but thank you for all the work that you all have done. It's a necessary conversation. And we're just going to have to put on our big boy, big girl pants and make some tough decisions. Thank you.
Okay, that seems to be it on the hands. I am going to recommend and if any commissioner would like to, I'd like to create, let's say, a steering committee that would work for the commission to put together the strategy for how we might take on tackle this problem. It's it's not something I think that's going to happen overnight. Obviously, it's going to be something that would be coming, you know, over time. I I could honestly, this is going to take us a year or two to put together a twenty-five year plan to fully explore. You know, what our options are. I mean, perhaps we can reduce our assets. Obviously, we're going to continue to move forward and some of this funding could be accessed perhaps by the federal government, through the federal government. There is talk about bringing earmarks back. And if we specific specify specific specify things we would really like to be funded, we can work with our congressional delegation on that. So this, the entire cost may not come directly only from us, but there may be other sources. Either reduce our cost and or find other sources, that'd be very strategic, but it's really going to take discipline. So you don't have to say now, just send me an email that you would like to be considered to be part of that. And we will put together a steering committee. I see Commissioner Bynum, did you have, you had a comment?
Mayor thinks I was just going to volunteer for your committee since I chair the Public Works and Safety Standing Committee.
Yeah, you weren't going to be able to not volunteer.